Okay. All right, we'd like to call the order of the Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. Please let the record show that all members of the city council are present with Council Hilton joining us via telephone. We also have members of the city staff here with us as well as members of the public. We've asked Mr. Steve Brooks to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do your right raise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, and we have asked Council Arnold if he would lead us in or if he would give the invocation tonight.
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow our heads and come to the beginning of this meeting, we invite thy Spirit to be with us to guide and direct us in all that we do, that we might be able to make decisions that would benefit the city, that would be a place that thou would be pleased with. And we're grateful for those that work for the city, that provide our protection and our utilities. We ask that thou would bless them with safety and they can go home to their families as they're done with their day's work. We're grateful for those that serve this community, that visit this community, and we ask that you bless them as well with the prosperity that would be beneficial to this city. And we're thankful for the opportunity to serve thee, and we ask that thou would make us instruments in thy hands. And I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Council Arnold. We now have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas. No action will be taken during the public comment. Please state your name and the city that you reside in and try to keep your comments to approximately three minutes. Right to the microphone there, please.
Is it on? Apparently it's on.
It's on.
I reside in the senior center.
Okay.
And we have just had a rent raise.
Your name?
Harold Daz.
Okay, go ahead.
And we've just had a rent raise, and they've given us until August to come up with a whole bunch more money for each month. And are you guys affiliated with the HUD people? Are you, that's what you're comparing your rent raise increase with the HUD people? And if you are, do we get some of the HUD money to recover our rent because we can't afford to live there if the rent keeps going up like it has? We actually can't afford to live there if we, and so is this a HUD organization?
Can I respond? Yeah, Council Stevens, yeah.
Okay, HUD is more of a benchmark because what we're trying to do is charge a market rate, but what is market rate? Because it fluctuates. Market rate is whatever what somebody will pay. But HUD is, does surveys and whatnot to give a benchmark of what a value is, of what comparables are renting for in an area. But what I think you're referring to is Section 8 HUD housing, which is subsidized from HUD.
Yes, yes.
And that, okay, so I can see where there's a little bit of confusion. This is not a Section 8 HUD housing because you have to, whoever owns a Section 8 entity has, or the entity has to apply and meet certain criteria. That facility is not a Section 8 subsidized. The only thing that HUD is, is just use their data to help us determine the value of what rents are. And quite frankly, they're a little on the low side of what market is.
Okay, so then you just want us to move out then because we can't afford to pay the rent?
And this isn't going to be really a discussion. I mean, this isn't a time for like a discussion back and forth. I just wanted him to kind of clarify what HUD was.
Okay, well, anyway, you know, we've come to just try to understand why, you know, we signed the lease, a different lease in December that said it would give us three years to help save the money to pay for when we get the increase, the people that already lived there, not the new people that came in. So we were hoping that, you know, by the time social security went up and we could save a little bit of money so that we would have enough money to pay for the rent when it comes in three years. They gave us, it's been six months, they gave us three years to the date of December 2022. And then all of a sudden, no, we have no right to do that now. Now it's just automatically raised. I just wanted to be here to say that we have a hard time. We'll have to, we'll have to find another place to live or something else to do because we can't afford that right away. I just mentioned that.
Thank you.
I mean, we've really enjoyed the senior center, but, and they've been really good to us. They've taken away a lot of things that we've had in the past and then raised our rent. So it's kind of a double edged sword there. We don't get to have any, we had Chris that would come over and help as a manager for a couple of hours in the evening or the afternoon. Now we have no one to do that. I know we're supposed to be independent living, but I don't know. Anyway, I thought I'd just let you guys know that we're not real happy with it.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Barbara Anderson. I live at the RDA. It used to be RDA, it's not RDA anymore, Senior Housing. What we're trying to say is in October, we were told that we'd have three years, they would gradually raise our rent to the HUD rent, that it would go up like, the first year mine was going to go up $15.9, then $77, until it was up at the HUD rent. It was signed by Mr. Brooks over here. They were giving us three years to make it up to the HUD rate. Then we get this letter on Monday saying, no, now we're not going to do that. You just have to pay it. And it raises that $247 for me, and I just don't think, I would have made a different decision if he would have told us back in October that that was going to happen. And I know you know the HUD publishes the rates ahead of time, so somebody had to be aware that they were going up to a certain point. Well, they were because they have it on here. But I'm upset because I made certain decisions in October when they presented this that I would have made totally different decisions. And now there's, the properties I have my name on aren't available for me to move to another, it's getting really hard to find any place that's affordable for somebody on a fixed income. Oh, I have a social security, and I'm really not happy about being told one thing in October, signed by Mr. Brooks, and then he leaves something on my door, couldn't even talk to us in person, leaves us on our door that now it's, mine's increasing $247 a month. That's a big increase without any prior notice. And I just don't think that was the correct thing to do, especially since I relied on this in October to make certain decisions, I would have made different decisions. And I just don't think it was fair at all or moral for you guys to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for the public comment tonight. We'll now move on to presentations and reports.
Can I, can we, because this is RDA, can we talk about this more in RDA?
In our RDA meeting, two weeks from now, in two weeks.
What is that, two weeks from now?
Yeah, two weeks from now, yeah, absolutely, we can.
Yeah, that's when we should do it because it is an RDA issue.
This is, this is, what you're bringing up is valid, but we're, we're agenda driven, and it's not on the agenda, so other than just a stipulation of like the explanation I gave you, but where we can put this on the RDA agenda in two weeks, I think this is, we can have a, you know, a discussion.
Do that, yes, we'd appreciate that if you would do that.
Okay.
Do we have to do anything other than tell you or?
Nope, we'll put it on there.
Back and talk to you.
Yep, we'll put it on there for two weeks.
Look at your smiling faces.
Right, Mr. Brooks, we're good?
Yep.
We're good.
We will get it.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on, presentations, reports, the mayor's report. I did have one thing, I went to WACOG yesterday, and Council Hanson actually made a comment about this a little bit. They are looking at implementing what's called the Fifth Fifth. And you may remember, we've gone through a couple of quarter percent increases on the sales tax. The last one was Proposition 1, that .25 that they use for roads and stuff. And that one actually had to have a citizen referendum on it. This one does not. It's just something implemented by the county. The county's real hesitant to implement it because they're afraid the mayors are all gonna, when the heat comes, the mayors are going to say, hey, it was the county, we didn't do it. So they're looking for support from the cities before they implement it. So what it is, is a two tenths of a percent sales tax increase. When, if it were to go into effect, 1% of that would go to transit for three years. .5% would actually go to the cities. And we can have a discussion, I think I might like to see this on maybe the agenda in two weeks. I can bring some numbers and stuff because I would like you guys' input and submit, like, I don't just want to make the decision, yeah, Riverdale supports it. So I'll bring the numbers and stuff. It's actually disproportionately beneficial to Riverdale because of all of our sales tax, but it is a, it's a two tenths increase in sales tax.
And they've expanded the use of it, so it's more than just what it originally was in the first.
Yeah.
For the road funds too.
Yeah. And we can talk to, maybe Sean would be familiar with that and Cody and stuff, and look at the exact uses on it. But anyway, it was, it was a good discussion, but I would like you guys to give some input on that before I just kind of say, yeah, Riverdale's in favor of it, so we'll discuss that a little bit. I didn't have too much else for the mayor's report. As far as city council assignment reports, any, any reports from your assignments? Mosquito abatement's doing well. I saw somebody in the city said a truck went by that was putting out a weird fog, so that's a good sign. Like, yeah.
They usually do that in the morning because it sits low and sometimes the, and they will notify the fire department or, you know, when they're in the area because literally people were saying, hey, there's smoke, so there's got to be fire. And, but it's, it can, it can linger heavy and be sticky, and so they try to do it when there's little to no traffic.
Very good. Well, it's going to be a big year for mosquitoes, I think we all know that.
It's awful year, and, and there is a run on the chemicals and there's, they're being late being delivered.
Are they still telling us to just call if we're having problems? Is that still the case?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, number three, swearing in. We have a new police officer, Rory Powers, Chief Brinkman.
So this is Rory Powers, and he is coming to us from the Highway Patrol. He had a couple of years in corrections and then went to the Highway Patrol for six years, and so he's bringing a lot of good, good experience here. And he's got his family here with him as well, well, part of them, right?
Wife and, wife and one child.
One of, one of the kids.
What county were you in, corrections?
What's that?
What county?
I started in Salt Lake, and then I came up to Davis for a couple of years.
So a lot of good, good experience there. I was trying to think, I don't think we've ever hired someone from the Highway Patrol, so he can, he can teach our guys a few tricks too.
That's a lot of pressure.
But the thing I really liked about him when we were going through his interview is he really wanted to be more involved in a community. That's what he felt like he was kind of lacking in his current job, and so he's, wants to be really community oriented and involved in that type of policing, so it's going to be a little bit of a shift in the type of work, but he's, he's already off to a great start. The other thing that was really awesome in the interview, when we interviewed him, was I would ask like the first question, and then I looked down the rest of the page, and I was like, wow, you just answered every, he was so thorough in his answers, and the answers were so good, like he literally answered like every question on the page.
He's making your job easy for you.
And his first and second answer, so very intelligent. He's going to do, he's just going to do an awesome job in the city, very personable, nice guy. It's going to be fun having him here, so we're, we're really looking forward to it. We want to welcome his family to the Riverdale family. We appreciate the, the support that you guys will give to him and everything that you do, and we're looking forward to a great, long career.
We need to.
With that, we will have Michelle swear in.
Okay.
We've done this before, hasn't it?
Just once.
Raise your right hand and be up for me. I state your name.
I, Rory Powers.
Just solemnly swear that I will support.
Just solemnly swear that I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Utah.
And the state of Utah.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And then I will discharge my duties.
And I will discharge my duties.
As a Riverdale Police Officer with fidelity.
As a Riverdale Police Officer with fidelity.
Chief, I'll admit, I have to cheat. I don't know all your officers by name, and I got to have that name tag.
We're waiting on it. It hasn't been made yet. They're, they're really slow with those, so.
Yep, it's coming, so.
Awesome, congrats.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's it?
I scared you away.
We're leaving you.
I'm a little scared now.
Okay. Well, that's awesome. I always love getting a new police officer, and you know, in eight years, he's got a long time left and, right, you know, we're losing a lot to retirement right now, so it's good to get one on there that doesn't, isn't close to retirement. Number four, Mr. Brooks, a flood update, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't know that I have a whole lot more to add than what I did in the pre-planning meeting. Trail is now open. That just happened late this afternoon. Everything should be going. That was a mess, like even the tunnel was a ton of work, and it kept flooding or plugging that, that pump that we have down there because of all the debris that was going in there. Then they had to go in and power wash it and everything, so it's been a lot of work. They started this last week, was it about Wednesday, you and I talked, and it took about that long to get it done, so. But it's all cleared off. Sandbags were moved early this morning between fire and public works. They got that all cleaned up, and then they just had to get the dirt and stuff off, so it should be up and going. We anticipate that it'll stay open. As I mentioned at pre-planning meeting, there is a rise in the river that's going to, we're sitting at about, I think, just under 13 feet now, and it's going to jump up to 14, so it'll go up another foot. But we were up to, so that will be sitting at 14, we were up to almost 16, I think, for those two week periods, so it's still, you'll notice it, but it shouldn't be that bad. We think we'll still be okay. And then it'll probably stay at that level for some time, but again, a lot of it just depends on how much they hold back in the reservoirs, as long as they keep getting enough out and getting it downstream. Once those get filled up, then they have no more control over it. They've done a wonderful job at this point, so it's been amazing, and they're getting close. They, at this point, it's going to be hard to juggle. They got to know how much do you keep and how much do you let go? Because they want them full by the time this stops, but you know, you just never know. And so it's a, it's a, they're rolling the dice, but they've done a great job so far. They've really saved us. Saved a lot of people for even worse damages, so we've been lucky. It's been nice. But you got any questions on anything in regards to any of that, or? We didn't, didn't sustain any, we did lose some banks and stuff that, we kind of always will, especially on the southern side, that river's just, the way that weaves through there, it's just going to cut stuff out. And up past the bridge, we've lost a chunk there that we're going to have to look at some things there, not necessarily us, but the trails people. But for the most part, it hasn't been too bad for what we've actually lost in damages.
Tell our guys thanks. I know when I asked to have it open last Wednesday, and they, they said it'd probably be the end of this next week, I probably, I probably didn't look as pleasant as maybe I could have, but I do appreciate it.
No, they're fine.
I'm sure they did a more thorough job than I was expecting. I was like, just get the sandbags out of there, and let's get it open, you know, but.
You know, they, they are good, and they don't complain, they just go get it done. The biggest thing is they have their regular stuff between mowing and all their usual stuff, and then they got to fit these things in between, so they were just concerned more about time. But between the fire and Sean's guys, they really knocked that out hard the last two days, so.
Okay, thank you. The next one is for Mr. Brooks as well, a legislative summary.
Yeah, this is, this is the one that I do every year. The Prosecutors Association actually puts it together, but then I go through and take out a lot of the things that don't pertain to us to try and save Utah time, and I color code them as best I can by looking at it, saying this is the department this belongs to. So any of the ones that would be color coded for council, you'd want to pay attention to those, and then department heads have all received it, and same thing with them, and, and then we'll just start bringing stuff back as we need to, to get caught up on the new changes, legislative changes. There was a lot of stuff in there, and a couple of them are pretty impactful, the, the whole deal on the final plats and stuff, taking that away from city councils. I think we're just seeing the tip of the iceberg. This is what worries me about it, they are just coming after us everywhere. And so that will now fall back on administration, and they were point blank, just said, you guys stay in your lanes, and that's not your lane. I mean, that's flat out what they said. So when I say you guys, I'm referring to the council as the legislative body. So now, you know, it puts even more weight, I think, on our planning commission to make sure that those things are clean before they move on, and then we'll have to figure out how we're going to handle it on the administrative side. But some pretty significant changes, and they keep doing this, and that's just the scary thing about it. But, you know, we'll deal with it, but if you get a chance, look through those, especially pay attentions to the ones administratively and the, the council ones, make sure you take a peek at those. If you have questions on them, give me a call. And I have the, the links to all those. You can find them, it's not hard. I think there's a link even at the start of this legislative summary, if you want to pull those up on the state and read them on your own. But these, they're quite simple, some of them, as far as the analysis of them, but it's, it's a, it's a good work, and it saves me a ton of time. It still takes me a long time to go through all that, but goodness, if I had to start from scratch, I'd never get that done. That's a nightmare. So anyway, I know that, Alan, we killed more trees with it, but I don't have any control over it, it's just, it is what it is, so. There was a lot of stuff this year, most bills they've, they've ever tracked from the, from the league this year, by far. It wasn't even close, so scary, scary stuff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brooks. We'll now move on to the consent items. Number one is consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the May 16 council work session and council meeting. I did remember a correction I had, Ms. Maragoni. It was in the work session, and it's in the mayor's report. It talks about a serious accident on the freeway in which Riverdale's police department responded to assist, assisted to assist the Highway Patrol. I believe they were assisting our fire department on that. That's who reached out to me and told me thanks for the police, so rather than the Highway Patrol, it was the Riverdale Fire Department that they were helping. And that's all I had on that. Are there any other changes or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, a motion to be in order.
So moved.
Sorry, a motion to, a motion to approve would be in order, that is so moved, and we have a second as well. Did you get that, Ms. Maragoni?
All right, I change up what I usually say.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to our second consent item. This is a consideration to set a public hearing to receive and consider public comments regarding the following. Amending the Riverdale City budget for the fiscal year 2023. Proposed amendments to the Riverdale City Code Human Resources Manual. This concerns the salaries of the city council, mayor, and the justice court judge. Nonreciprocal interfund activity transfer of resources utilized by the city's general fund as provided by the city's water fund. And finally, adopting the Riverdale City budget for fiscal year 2024. Any discussion on the setting of that public hearing? Seeing none, a motion to set that public hearing would be in order.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We will have that public hearing at next meeting. We'll move on to our action items. The first one is a consideration of Resolution 2023-20, approving an extension to an exclusive towing agreement with Stoffler's Towing. Chief Brinkman.
So this, this is our extension that comes up every two years. When we first entered into this agreement, that agreement allowed for two-year extensions as long as we were both content with each other in the service. So that's what we're here to do tonight, is to try and extend that for two years. Stoffler's does an incredible job for us and for the citizens. Like I told you in the work session, I don't believe we've had any complaints at all, at least that I'm aware of, from the public. They're always very fast to get there. The other thing I really like about them is they can handle anything, like any, any type of situation, they have the equipment, the manpower to deal with it. We don't have to bring in someone else, so they're very capable, very knowledgeable, they know what they're doing. Their employees are all really good people, and they have contact people that I can reach out to if I do have a problem, and they usually respond to me within a very short amount of time. But we've, we've had no problems, so my recommendation would be that we stick with, with Stoffler's and not open it up. For RFP, we're extremely happy with the service, and this would be for all of our non-consent toes. As you also know, they also provide other, have provided other services in the community of Riverdale City, which has been very beneficial to the citizens in the past when we've had other problems that have come up in the community, so. I don't know if there's anything you guys want to say or add, or are you good?
Go Chuck. Go Chuck.
Guess I'm thrown under the drug. This is Chuck from Stoffler's Towing, and he's selling Chuck's towing that we work with for a long time.
Right. So I'm their safety manager, so I'm the go-to guy if they have any questions, any problems. They're my go-to people if I do also. It's been a real pleasure working with the city, even back when I owned my own, and Stoffler's come in and says, I asked them, I says, I need help, and here we are, years later. It was an honor for us to help you guys with your trees that went down, help the citizens out. We've reached out with some of the flooding and stuff in the past. We have equipment that we can haul in, and we have different means of helping out also. So we would thoroughly enjoy continuing on, providing for the city and the residents, so it's been an honor. Thank you, you guys.
Okay.
Mayor, I might just, if I could say something in that windstorm deal, that was, if you recall, and I say it more for the newer members, but when that happened that morning, we were in full scramble mode. We had trees down everywhere, and the city doesn't have the means to do that. We don't have the people, we don't have the equipment, and it was one phone call to Chuck, and he says, I'll be there tomorrow. And, I mean, they hauled thousands and thousands of dollars worth of trees out of this community that we never could have done and never asked for anything. But they not only got them out of the yards, but they hauled them clear down 12th Street out to Little Mountain or whatever that is, and, I mean, it was phenomenal, and we owe them big time for that. That was amazing, absolutely.
Okay, Council Stevens.
If I could, the contract for towing, is, is that for, what are some of the scenarios where you would call upon them, just for my indication?
So most of it's going to be, you know, if, if your car breaks down and we show up, you can still choose who you want to tow it. We would leave that up to the person. Obviously, if they didn't have anyone in mind, we would tell them we have a contract with Stoffler's. If you'd like to use them, we can call them. But this is going to be like, you pull over a car, they don't have insurance, we impound the car, state tax impound, all those non-consent type of toes, we're going to call them for. They do take care of a lot of our traffic accidents. If people don't have a preference on a tow company they want to call, then we'll just call them to come out and assist. But, so those are mainly that, just the non-consent things where, that we're dealing with, where DUIs, where state in, state tax impounding cars, or abandoned vehicles, other work that we're doing out there is everything that we would always call them for.
Just out of curiosity, if, if there is a, on the freeway, I think there's a, something called the click or something, where they have a rotation as to the towing company, and I think the Highway Patrol uses that, or whoever's on the freeway. Does Riverdale Road, which is a state road, is there, do we have, is there such a, you know what I'm talking about, about the rotation?
We don't use a rotation.
But, but on, on Riverdale Road streets that, we would use obviously the contract, but where we don't own technically Riverdale Road, it's a state highway or, you know, South Weber, do we, that, that still falls under this contract?
Yep, because we're, we're the ones responsible to do all the enforcement on it, and so, yeah, it falls under the contract. Anything that we, we need, we use the contract.
Then it's just the freeway that has Then it's just the freeway that has it.
Well, and even, even if we went out on I-15 to handle something for the Highway Patrol, we would still use our contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just curious, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Counsel Arnold.
Move to approve Resolution 2023-20, approving an, an extension to the exclusive towing agreement with Stoffer Towing.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you poll the council?
Counsel Mau?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Hilton?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
All right, that's fantastic. Uh, that passes unanimously and, uh, that was a pretty good endorsement from both sides, so, uh, hopefully we can just keep that going.
Thank you for being a partner.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys and appreciate your work with the city.
You guys have been fantastic. All right, we'll move on to item number two, consideration of ordinance 965, amending Title I, Chapter Six, ordinances and resolution procedures of the Riverdale Municipal Code regarding noticing requirements. Ms. Marigoni.
So like I said in the work session, it's just, uh, amending our code to match the state code now. They changed the noticing to simplify it for all of the different things that we have to notice for. So it's just class A or class B instead of, um, everything having their own requirements. Also takes out the requirement for the, uh, newspaper, any kind of newspaper posting, so save a little bit of money that way too.
Very good.